This is Frank Martin, State Organizer in New Mexico. Good to see you.
Hello Frank, are you with the official board?
No, I'm a Mises Caucus State Organizer.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, every everyone, I am probably going to get going. I I'm gonna come back. Obviously, I'm not taking what I meant by that was. I'm gonna come back when the meeting starts. Each time I have started these meetings, there's been Zoom updates for 10 minutes. So I figured I'm gonna start Zoom once I get home. And of course, there was no updates. But I literally just walked in the door from work, so I wanna take off my pantyhose. I know it's probably too much information, but I want to get comfortable. I'm gonna put again in the chat the OneNote. A member did send me a question, so I wanted to explain to everyone here, in case you're not familiar with OneNote, because if one member had a question, others do. The OneNote is an electronic notebook that's organized just like a paper notebook. Along the left-hand side, there are tabs. So when you first open the OneNote, it might look like it's just showing you the Zoom information for this meeting. But if you look along the left-hand side, you'll see there are tabs. And if you click on each of those tabs, there are documents within the tabs. So for instance, I don't have the OneNote up here, which I should. Some of them will say secretarial, and there will be linked to my live notes, linked to my live votes. There's a tab that says miscellaneous reference documents that will give you copies of the National Party bylaws, the national, you know, various things that people may want to refer to. But the things non-standard for this meeting would be the thing that says New Mexico documents. And then there you'll see documents that LNC members might be referring to in this meeting, so that any member of the party can be looking at the exact same things that LNC members are looking at. So that's the purpose of the OneNote, and the link is in chat. So I'm gonna go take off for approximately seven minutes, and I will be back.
Yep. Karen Anne, I could not open OneNote a while ago, but I'll try it again.
Yeah, cuz a member in chat was just able to open it because they sent me a question, so it should be fine. Let me know if there's an issue, and I'll check the permissions. But I'll I'll be back in a few minutes cuz I just run in the door from work and
I think the issue is my computer.
It could be. Plus, it's a Microsoft product. It's a really good Microsoft product, but you know, they can be a little buggy sometimes, but I'll be I'll be back in a few.
You might you might try a different browser cuz it opens in a browser.
I think I may try that next Frank. I'm gonna try it one more time. If it doesn't work, I'll I'll go to Plan B, then see what I can figure out. May have to log on separately from my cellphone. I'll do something.
Good evening, Richard.
Hello, JJ. Good to see you, my friend. And I see you have another article published that I need to read. Congratulations.
The bloom is well off the rose.
Hello, Angela.
Hello.
Glad to see you have internet access.
I do, I do. I'm in a hotel, but I do have internet access.
Usually, it's pretty good in a hotel. I'm gonna make you co-host, Angela.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And of course, I got here a half hour early, Angela, and no Zoom updates, of course, when when I have plenty of time.
Hey, Angela. Hey, everyone.
Hello.
I am working, so I've got a headset on, and I'll be muted most of the time, but I'm here.
Gotcha.
If it's possible to mark myself present for roll call early.
Um, I don't I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you.
Just don't 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 disappear.
No, I'm here.
Oh, I wanna pull up YouTube on my other browser so that when we do hit stream, it should go quick more quickly if I'm signed into the party account already.
Great idea. Oh, there we go.
Karen Anne, this is Richard or anybody else who might know. I'm not sure if I'm got the OneNote or not on the left side of the page. I have a series of things I can click on like secretarial several. So, okay, thank you.
Yep, that's it. And Madam Chair Oliver Hall has joined us as well.
Fantastic. Seven thirty on the nose for me, eight thirty for all of you. Gonna have to get used to my time change. Okay. See here. Everybody's joining. So we're gonna wait just a couple more minutes. But in the meantime, in the near meantime, we are gonna do public comment. So most of you know the drill, the way that works. Go to the bottom of your screen, click the little smiley face that says reactions. Use the raise hand function if you want to give public comment. I will go down the line. If the line is really, really, really long, it'll do. I'll do one minute public comment. If it's not that crazy long, we'll do two minutes.
Is my screen being shared, Madam Chair?
It sure is. I can see it.
Great.
And if you're gonna give public comment, we are gonna time you, but it would also be a great service to everyone else, and most importantly, yourself, if you time your own public comment. So I recommend you use a stopwatch on your cellphone, laptop, your sundial, whatever, whatever works for you. All right. How are we? How are we looking on attendance, Madam Secretary?
I have to pull up the participant screen because you know how everything gets all
Oh.
I know you and I both. I'm pretty sure we have quorum, but I'm pulling up the participant screen now. Okay, one, two, three. Maybe not. The screens keeps jumping around with me each time I get an admit.
Same. I'm not pushing any new admissions for the next like 20 seconds while I count.
Uh, I think we do have quorum, Madam Chair. It keeps jumping, but I've seen enough LNC members, and Connor is coming in right now.
Is Sean.
But Dustin's here as well.
Okay.
I don't. I think Mr. Nikala's not coming because I got a text from him that asked if proxy votes are allowed. No, but that makes me think he's not going to be here.
He asked me about the time. So we're missing Stephen Nikala. I think we're missing Joshua Smith. Who else are we missing?
Well, I saw Mr. Hagopian. I didn't see Mr. Blankenship.
Okay, we're missing. Oh, cuz he's not gonna be on.
Okay, so let me
He's not gonna be on.
I saw Mr. Bowen. I saw Mr. Elliot, Elliot, excuse me. I didn't see Mr. Ruffo. Is he here? Okay. Um, I saw Dave Benner. I saw Mr. Duque. I didn't see Mr. Eklund.
Okay.
I do see Ms. Eiler. Um, Pat Ford, I didn't see him. Is he here?
He's not. He's having trouble registering. So if somebody could send him a link, another link. Um, he just called me. I just got off the phone with him, but he is available. He just can't seem to register.
Okay.
Um, is Ms. Gabbert here?
Yes.
Okay, I saw Mr. Nana. Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Okay, I saw Mr. Clark, Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Mr. Dasing?
Martin Cowan is here.
I think I saw Otto.
I don't think I saw David.
I'm here.
Oh, I see. Okay. Um, Robley Hall?
Don't see him.
I saw Mr. Napomucino. Mr. Pankey, I knew was going to be late, but for right now, I'm gonna put him down as absent. Mr. Tunevich?
Present.
Thank you. And I saw, I believe, Ms. Yena Scavitch.
Here. Okay.
And just for the record, a lot of people here don't know, Chase Crum is here, who's my official unofficial Assistant Secretary.
Okay, so why don't we do public comment? And then I am going to have you do official roll call.
Okay.
Okay, anybody who wants to give public comment, get your hand up. Please remember, keep it to two minutes. If this meeting doesn't go too long, we may do public comment again at the end.
Are we calling officially to order, Madam Chair?
Actually, yeah, let's go ahead and call to order at eight thirty-five PM Eastern Time. Okay, so we have two hands up for public comment. Mr. Jonathan Jacobs, go right ahead. You can be recognized.
Madam President or Madam Chair, excuse me. Just, uh, there was a point that I don't think I have seen noted at any point following this thing as I do incessantly um, that has been made. But I would like to point out that the L that the LNC bylaws do have a method for uh, challenging a decision of the LNC. Uh, it may be done by a petition of it of 10% of the delegates, which would be 101 at the last convention, or 1% of the sustaining members. Uh, this is not a particularly Herculean task. It is, uh, we have seen Ms. Harlow's, I believe, do this over the past year, and we have seen Mr. Phillies do this as well over the past year. However, in this particular case, it was not done. There was no challenge. Um, I would also can I would also note that I found Mr. Elliott's summary of the events to be quite good, and I and I would I would at least agree with I agree with the summary. There might be some daylight between us, but I would generally agree with the summary. That's it.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Jacobs. Next person with his hand raised is Andrew Jacobs.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to comment on if this split in New Mexico is not fixed by the time of the presidential election next year, in that the faction of the LP of New Mexico that controls ballot access does not or refuses to put the the nominated presidential candidate on the ballot. Uh, it could cost the party a lot of money to get ballot access to New Mexico. I looked up the independent candidate petition for to get ballot access to New Mexico. I looked up the independent candidate petition for president. It's two percent of the votes cast for president in the previous election. So I looked up the number. I crunched it. Comes out to about eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-nine signatures. I think that's what it was. And to do that, they don't allow candidate substitution there. So you'd have to start it after the convention. I believe the 2024 convention is going to be the last weekend of May. And the deadline would be around the twenty-eighth of June, something like that, maybe twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh June. So you're talking having to get like eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-nine signatures in like a month or less than a month. That could be extremely expensive. That could be easily $10 per raw signature. And you're probably going to have to double the requirement because there's not going to be much time to check validity. So that could cost in the hundreds of that. You could be talking like three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now, New Mexico also has a party petition. So if it becomes necessary to form another political party in order to put the presidential ticket on the ballot, there's a petition for that as well. Fortunately, it has the same deadline, so you could come up with a new party, the Liberty Party or whatever. And that is currently around thirty-five hundred signatures. Maybe it would go up next year. I don't know. I would anticipate somewhere in the ballpark of thirty-five hundred to five thousand signatures for that. And that wouldn't easy either, you know, so just keep that in mind that this is putting party ballot access at risk.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Jacobs. Okay, so that's that's all of public comment for now. So Madam Secretary, if you don't mind, could you please do roll call for us?
Okay, one sec. I'm going up on my screen. Somebody is echoing. Pat, I think that's you. If you can mute yourself, thank you. Madam Chair, did you want me just to go over who was we noted was missing before or do the whole formal?
Let's do the whole formal. Okay, so there's no dispute.
Okay, you are here, Mr. Smith. I'll come back and check again. Mr. Hegopian.
Here.
I am present. Mr. Blankenship, I believe, told us he'd be absent, but given a chance, just in case he came. Mr. Bowen.
Here.
Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Nikala. He is not here. Mr. Ruffo.
Present.
Mr. Benner.
I'm present. Sorry, I was on mute.
That's okay. Mr. Duque.
Here.
Mr. Eklund. Okay, Ms. Have him as absent. Ms. Eiler.
Present.
And Pat Ford is now here. Ms. Gabbard.
Here.
Mr. Nana.
I'm here.
Mr. Watkins.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Present.
Mr. Cowan.
Martin Cowan is present.
Mr. Dassing.
Present.
Mr. Hall. Have him as absent. Mr. Napomucino.
Present.
Mr. Pankey. Okay, I believe he will be a bit tardy. Mr. Tunjevich.
Present.
Ms. Yena Scavitch.
Here.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have absent. Mr. Smith, Mr. Blankenship, Mr. Nikala and Regionals, Mr. Eklund, which means Mr. Tunjevich will be sitting in for him. All the other Regionals are present, absent and alternates are Mr. Hall and Mr. Pankey.
All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, let me stream. I completely forgot about that. Let's do that. Right now. I do have a recording of that small segment that I could always upload, edit and upload. Why is it not streaming? One second. Stream on YouTube, live on YouTube. Come on now. Oh, here we go. Give it one moment, please. Put the right title in. Okay, it should be going live.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so let's take a look here. We have. We had two motions that were agendized technically three, but the second item was withdrawn. Presumably because the person who submitted a petition withdrew it. So I don't believe there's anything for that second one. So let's take a look at the agenda.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a motion prior to the first motion. I would move to go into Committee of the Whole with the stipulation that Chairman McArdle would remain in the chair and Secretary Harlos would remain in the secretary seat in order to discuss without the need for formal consideration of that first motion. I'd like to perfect it and have our discussion prior to. You know, a formal consideration.
Okay. So that's been moved. Does everyone understand what that motion was, what it means?
Martin Cowan does not understand.
Okay, Mr. Cowan. So let's take a look at the one note. We've got right here under agenda. There's items noticed, proposed policy manual amendment and Committee of the Whole. So if everyone could go into the one note and Madam Chair, when or I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, when you have a moment, can you drop the link to the one note in the chat for anybody who came on late?
Sure, and it's also on the screen.
Great.
Always, but I will also put it in the chat. Just give me one second.
Okay.
Okay, it is also in the chat.
Okay, great. So Committee of the Whole. Ms. Harlos, would you like to explain what Committee of the Whole is?
Yes, and this will be my first rodeo with this. So Mr. Brown might need to come in and give some clarification. But a committee of the whole is as if we were an actual committee. So the loosened requirements of a committee would apply. So it's basically like appointing all of us to as if we were referring that motion to a committee to consider and report back to the Assembly the committee's recommendations. Any votes taken in Committee of the Whole are not recorded in the minutes. It just notes that we went into the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole then recommends action to the larger body. We come out of Committee of the Whole. And then we would do our formal consideration of the motion and I don't know if there was a second yet, and because there wasn't, I was one other thing I needed to add to my motion. Besides you staying in the chair, me staying in the seat as secretary and also allowing the committee, the whole to go into executive session if necessary.
Thank you.
I will thank you. Now that you've done that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Nana. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Cowan had a question. Mr. Cowan, did that help to explain what this process is?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand now.
Great. Okay, any other questions about how this works? And any other discussion about it? Yes, Mr. Tunjevich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mine is just a request for information. I'm unclear as to what the difference is in terms of following this path, the Committee of the Whole to an executive session as compared with just as the LNC has frequently done in the past, just move to go into executive session on its own. So what I hear is oh, there are what easier voting requirements. I just appreciate a further explanation from, you know, Mr. Brown or whoever feels competent. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. McArdle, excuse me, Chairman McArdle, would you like me to answer?
Sure. And then if Richard Brown has anything to add, let's have him pop in as well.
Because I have a feeling Mr. Tunjevich was might have misunderstood. My motion to go into Committee of the Whole is not to immediately go into executive session. I just moved that the Committee of the Whole would be able to if necessary. So we would have. We could rise out of Committee of the Whole, go into executive session, come out of executive session, go back into Committee of the Whole. But it's a lot easier just to be able to do it within Committee of the Whole. For intents and purposes of the membership, it would look pretty much identical. The difference would be there isn't a need for a formal motion for us to consider and any motions made within the Committee of the Whole is as if it was an outside committee making recommendations to the LNC. But unless we move into executive session, it's justice public. You know, for members watching, they probably won't even know a difference. It's a parliamentary distinction.
Got it.
Sounds like it gives us more flexibility. Thank you very much.
Okay, great.
Pardon me, Madam Chair. I need to shut my my door because Wayne's not here.
Sure. Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
No, I was just going to say that that's exactly right. It gives the body more flexibility. It enables you to consider things without there actually be a motion pending. You can discuss things informally. And you can actually craft a motion and come up with the wording you want. So it's in this case, it can be a very useful tool, but normally I don't like to use it, but it's perfect for this situation.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Harlos, are you back and ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay, fantastic. Any further discussion on this motion before we go to a vote? Going once, going twice. Okay, let's go ahead and go to a vote then. Madam Secretary, would you mind doing roll call?
One moment. I've got the template set up. Mr. Benner.
Sorry, I stepped to the side. Pass.
Okay, one sec. Mr. Blankenship is absent. Mr. Bowen.
Yes.
Mr. Duque.
Yes.
Mr. Tunjevich.
Yes.
Ms. Eiler.
Pass.
Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Hegopian.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Nana.
Yes.
Mr. Nikala is absent. Mr. Ruffo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith is absent. Mr. Watkins.
Yes.
Mr. Benner.
The motion is not on the voting template. Can I just be told what the motion is?
Sure, it's right here and I'll stick it on the template.
Yeah, I vote yes. I saw it.
Okay, but it's good for me to have it here anyway. So I don't have to do that at the end. And the other pass was Ms. Eiler.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Chair, it is thirteen zero zero.
Okay, great. The motion passes. Okay, so we are in Committee of the Whole now. And I am going to start off by asking a question of Mr. Hall and Mr. Brown. If you have an opinion, you can also chime in. During the course of this conversation, there there, we're going to be discussing situations that could lead to litigation. But not discussing any plans of the LNC to litigate. That's I want to make that clear. That's not what I'm talking about or anyone else's plans to litigate. I don't have specific plans or I haven't been given information, but there are going to be a lot of if this, then that situations. In order to discuss that sort of stuff, do we need to go into executive session?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, the safest thing to do if you want to keep your discussion confidential is to go into executive session. It's entirely up to the discretion of you and the others who will be having a conversation whether you decide that that's necessary. If you think that you're going to be discussing issues in a general in a general sense and not discussing specific plans for litigation, then I think it's probably safe not to go into executive session. But again, it's up to your discretion.
Okay, Mr. Brown, do you have any opinions on it?
No, I agree with Mr. Hall and it's totally up to the to the LNC whether you think there's a need for confidentiality.
Okay, so I think what I'm going to do is I'm gonna say and ask questions however I feel fit. If it starts to make someone uncomfortable because it's sounding too litigious, please let me know and we can go into executive session. I just want to stress that there's no plans to sue anyone and no one has told me that I have this lawsuit in my hand. I just want to make sure that everybody's making an informed decision because I know that litigation is something that some people are worried about. So on that note.
Ms. McArdle, Chairman McArdle, excuse me, I'm like getting, and I can't find my reaction. Oh, there it is. Okay, I got it. I have a suggestion i- if the bodies amenable to it, and I think this might make things flow a bit smoother. Is if we discuss first the parliamentary issues because that obviously is not at all confidential. Because I do think there is a double prong here. The first is, again, the thing which can be absolutely public is parliamentary wise. Did the Libertarian Party of New Mexico have the authority to disaffiliate in the manner that they did? And if the question to that is yes, we don't have to proceed any further. But if the answer to that is no, then there are other implications that are legal implications. And I do think we need to go into executive session for that. But I'd like but the legal implications are completely irrelevant. If the sense of the LNC is yes, they parliamentary had the right to do that because if they did, we have no right to dis- to disallow it.
Well, okay, so let's. That's that's a very good point. So I guess first what I want to address is what we're actually discussing. What is the initial motion that was the first motion that was that was noticed? What is it about? This is essentially about whether or not we are recognizing their disaffiliation. Is everyone clear on that? That's what the implication of the motion was. Whether or not you like it or don't like it, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that. Okay, good. And then when Secretary Harlos made this made this point about parliamentary procedure. I think that's a really good point. I am also going to say something that might irritate some of you. Or not, let's just get it out in the open. Some of us are going to be making decisions based on what we believe to be procedurally correct. According to bylaws, according to parliamentary law, possibly according to New Mexico statutes. Some of us have indicated that we are going to be making decisions based on our feelings or instincts. And that that is a highest order about what our gut feeling is with why we think this should or shouldn't be recognized. And some of you, I also acknowledge your region reps and you are making decisions based on how your state chairs have asked you to vote. Which which I totally respect. So I like Ms. Harlos's idea of discussing parliamentary procedure first. I just want to recognize that I know some of you, that's that's not really your thing. But let's just see what, see how it goes. What do you? What do you think? Pretty good. Okay, well, do we have parliamentary opinions on this?
I posted, pardon me, Madam Chair, I wasn't yet recognized. Maybe, okay, I had posted in the one note my views on it. I'm obviously not the party's parliamentarian, but do have a certification in there. And it's consistent with our prior rulings.
Okay.
With the with the prior rulings being that their July convention was illegitimate. In part based upon the fact that their March convention was illegitimate. We do have an effect of cascading illegitimate conventions here. Their bylaws, like all bylaws, including the National Party bylaws, limit the power of the board. The board is not the organization. Too many boards confuse the two. They act as custodians of the organization, which is the members in between conventions. The New Mexico Constitution and bylaws, and I did put it in the one note, limit the power of both the executive committee and the central committee. There's an additional consideration here that's not strictly parliamentary, but I do think it needs to come into our consideration is that their executive committee, as far as I know, and anyone from New Mexico, please feel free to correct me. And certainly according to their website, is identical to their central committee and it's not supposed to be. Their central committee is supposed to be quite large. But it seems like they haven't had at large at-large elections in a while and that there are no organized counties so that their executive committee and central committee are one in the same. So you're dealing with five people. So that their Executive Committee and Central Committee are one and the same. So you're dealing with five people. That's it, making such a weighty decision that they're not authorized to do. The bylaws or constitution and bylaws, I'm just going to call it bylaws for short, but let's have it on the record that their governing document is actually called Constitution and Bylaws. Um, says that the Central Committee, um, can, um, do things that are in accordance with New Mexico law, can also do anything specified in this constitution, which disaffiliation is not specified in their last effective constitution, or carry out the will of their delegates in convention. So the only one of those three areas of authority that disaffiliation would fall under is the will of the delegates and convention. There's been no vote of New Mexico delegates in convention to disaffiliate, and the power of their Executive Committee is even more narrow. It's to carry out the day-to-day operations of the party. Disaffiliation is not a day-to-day operation. Um, I fully recognize the right of the Libertarian Party of Mex- of New Mexico to disaffiliate. Properly done. That right belongs to the members. They did not give it to the leadership. It's completely illegitimate and abusive to the membership for the leadership to seize that authority to themselves. Um, arguably, with the LNC having plenary authority, we could vote one meeting to dissolve the party. And even though we actually arguably have the right to do that, I think that would be extraordinarily abusive to the membership. We're not the party. The board of any state party is not the party. The membership is the party.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Harlos. So I, I would like to hear from, uh, Richard Brown, our parliamentarian, next. And then we're going to go down the, the list of people for public comment.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, i- in a nutshell, I agree with Ms. Harlos. Um, it is my, been my opinion from the beginning that the, the New Mexico Convention, I believe it was the July Convention, was improperly called, was illegal. Any action taken at that convention would be null and proper, primarily for failure to properly give notice, but there were other issues. But, but the, the main reason being failure to give, to give proper notice. Um, and that therefore the bylaw amendment, which they now are trying to rely on, which they adopted there, is simply null and void. And that the operative bylaws are the ones from, uh, I've, I've got them here somewhere from, from twenty twenty-one, which they have just recently removed from their website. Earlier this week, they had the old bylaws on their website. Uh, they have since removed those, and then unless they just put it back up, the only bylaws are those that they adopted at this convention, which I'm firmly convinced, you know, was invalid, and that these bylaws are null and void, and that neither their board, uh, nor their Central Committee have, have the authority to disaffiliate, that it would rest with the members in convention. Because under the prior bylaws, they, um, they, they simply did not have that authority.
So I want to, um, just to ask a clarifying question. Is it possible to claim that the Libertarian Party of New Mexico's last convention was illegitimate? And also recognize their disaffiliation from a parliamentarian perspective?
Um, uh, I think, if, if I heard your question correctly, can you simultaneously take the position that, that the convention was illegitimate, but recognize their disaffiliation?
Correct.
I, I think you could, but only if you, if you, uh, uh, I really don't see how you can do that. I'm, I'm trying to explain a way you maybe could get there.
Well, I have a way we could get there, but it's not that way.
Okay, yeah, I want to just procedurally, just a very strict procedural question.
Procedurally, if we wanted to recognize that they are disaffiliated and be consistent without rescinding our prior decision, we would have to disaffiliate them.
Okay, that, that'll be a separate one. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, Mr. Brown, like, crystal clear.
Yeah, and, and I concur with that opinion, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So let's go down the hand raised list. Thank you guys for being patient. First up is Dustin Nana.
Okay, so I have a question. Um, and, and maybe this, maybe Ms. Harlos would be the, the best person to answer this. Um, assuming the members were unhappy with this decision to disaffiliate within their constitution and bylaws, either members, does the membership have the power to call their own special convention and either, uh, you know, get on the record that they don't want to be disaffiliated, reverse this decision, however you want to phrase it. Is that something they could be doing? And if so, has anybody asked, you know, is that something that we've heard of that, that folks mi- are trying to do? Um, is that, is that even possible?
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, please.
No, their constitution bylaws do not give them the authority to call a special convention, but the Central Committee can call a special convention.
And then to, as, as a follow-up to that, to make sure everyone is, um, understanding the situation, could you, Ms. Harlos, or someone else, actually? Anyone, explain the differences between the Libertarian Party of New Mexico's general membership and the Central Committee, because not all, it's not the same in all states.
When, when I say Central Committee, I mean their Board of Directors.
There you go. Okay, so some states, you know, New York has a Central Committee. Ca- California, that would be more like our whole memberships.
Yeah, I mean their Board of Directors.
There you go. Okay, um, next up is Mr. Hagopian.
Okay, uh, similar question to Dustin, except this is based on the JC. Um, there was a judicial committee in both the old bylaws and in the new bylaws, it looked like. Um, both had the exact same wording from how you appeal a, a decision by the Central Committee or the Executive Committee. Um, it appears to me, has any, have any of those actions been taken? Have there been any appeals of the decision to the judicial committee?
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Um, yes, is there anyone on New Mexico who would like to respond though? From New Mexico? Devin, uh, can we hear from, from Devin Rivera, of course, because I don't want to talk over New Mexico here. Uh, Mr. Rivera, go ahead.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we have not made any motions at this moment because we're not entirely sure of what we have the power to do.
Got it. Okay, um, Ms. Harlos, did you have anything to add to that?
Members cannot appeal to the Judicial Committee. That is not a power that they have under their constitution and bylaws. The Judicial Committee is pretty much made up of their Board of Directors, which is, uh, like the police investigating themselves and deciding they did nothing wrong. And only the Central Committee can call, can, can set, refer something to the Judicial Committee. Members do not have the right to appeal to the Judicial Committee in New Mexico.
Okay, one moment. I'm tied over one.
Okay, I would, I would like to just add one bit of commentary there. Continuing breaches of the bylaws cannot be cured by a judicial committee decision anyway. Um, we should know this from the twenty twenty-two convention, in which I lost a JC appeal on the, the national level. And the delegates and conventions still said bad LNC. Um, when there's a, a subjective judgment call, that's all that's involved. Ju- judicial committees are great for that, like, was an ex, you know, an expulsion valid, but the bylaws were, were followed. But if our assertion here is that they violated their bylaws, it doesn't matter what a JC says. They've still violated their ju- bylaws. Because a continuing breach can be brought up at any time.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Mr. Benner.
All right, so I'm as zealous a secessionist as anyone. And the question of whether disaffiliation from national is permissible is not the controversy today. As I suspect indeed that all of us on the LNC believe it is. Instead, it's a matter of whether the act of New Mexico's Central Committee was authoritative and whether their decision violated their members' rights. So I can see that there is a good faith argument that the LNC doesn't have the jurisdiction to decide this matter. But then again, I do not think New Mexico's Judicial Committee can do so either. For the same reasons Karen Anne just pointed out, this is because their JC, even if it's triggered to sit or render an opinion on this, their bylaws make clear that such a body could only be comprised of people who are not parties to the controversy at hand. And indeed, their bylaws limit the JC only to members that were clearly parties to this controversy because they made this decision. So this is why it's my belief that I support the resolution after talking, the set of resolutions after talking to many people in my region, because I believe it's the most restrained and measured response. It's to make clear that their membership is the only group that can decide this question. So this would take the LNC out of that matter entirely and empower their membership to make the call and leave no doubt as to whether that this is supported by their sovereign affiliate, and indeed they are sovereign. So if their membership decides to secede in the positive, I'll say the same thing Winfield Scott told Abraham Lincoln on the eve of the Civil War, "Let our wayward brothers and sisters depart in peace." Uh, but whatever their decision, however, the pending resolutions allow our ballot access, which I believe to be non-negotiable, to be defended regardless of the choice made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benner. I believe up next is Mr. Elliott.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise in strong support of the idea that we've, uh, emphasized procedural process and bylaws and, uh, and follow the rules that are laid out that we agreed to follow. Uh, otherwise, if we go on emotion and feeling, we are simply acting as tyrants. We are here to represent the membership of the National Party. Uh, many of the members of New Mexico are also members of the National Party. Uh, I concur completely with, uh, Mr. Brenner's statement that we, uh, are, um, you know, we, 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 we're happy to honor the wishes of the membership of the Party of, Libertarian Party of New Mexico, and that is our sole goal, but we must do it in a proper and, uh, uh, a process manner if it's going to carry the weight that we wish it to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am not sure who's up next. It's Ms. Harlos or Mr. Hagopian?
Oh, everyone's ahead of me.
Okay, Mr. Hagopian?
Sure, and I'd just like to make a brief comment on the whole emotion discussion. Uh, we need to be careful about, uh, labeling anybody who disagrees with us, that it's an emotional argument. Uh, that's not fair nor correct. Uh, so we need to be careful of that going forward. Uh, my argument is not at all emotional. My argument is member-based. Members approved even the previous bylaws. They had the ability to change those. Members are allowed to vote for terrible bylaws. That's not illegal. The previous bylaws had no way, any different in these current bylaws to reverse a bad decision by leadership, which I think this is. Um, but the fact remains that there, if it was the old bylaws or these new bylaws, there's no difference in how a member could have responded and could have reversed this. So what I'm saying is, the LNC can't go, I don't think, the, the LNC can go through fifty states bylaws and, and basically say your bylaws are bad and they should have been better. And this is how they should have been better. And we're going to make a ruling based on that. Because I guarantee you that, you know, sixty percent of the states have terrible bylaws. Um, so I don't think that's our job. And so I just want to, A, say it's not emotion-based, and B, say, um, these are the, the section of the bylaws that would allow a member to overturn these, was not in the old one either. Um, so I think that that's kind of a argument that's not really fair to say that these illegal bylaws stop them from being able to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Nana, and then we'll go to Ms. Harlos.
Yeah, I have a question and then maybe a follow-up comment. Um, so we that, we, we asked, you know, can the members have a control of their own convention or force a convention? We asked, can the members appeal to the JC? The answer to that, essentially, both those questions is no. What, at what point would the members have the opportunity, if they wanted to, to change this or reverse this decision? Would this be something that they would be able to do at the next regularly-held convention, which I don't know exactly when that is. I'm assuming sometime early next year in the spring, if it's like most other states.
Well, they tried to attend convention this past one and weren't allowed, some of them. So I don't really know what to say beyond that. Are there any, is there anybody from the Libertarian Party of New Mexico present who would like to chime in and, and answer that? Because I, I would actually like to hear from the members.
Madam Chair, this is Frank Martin, uh, State Organizer, Mises Caucus State Organizer in New Mexico. May I be heard?
Yes, please.
Uh, yes, um, there will be a convention, there is a, a convention scheduled for March. Um, and we may be able to work up a strategy, uh, using our, using our numbers to overturn this. Um, it's not really certain how to do that, and that's one of the research items that, uh, I'm interested in.
Okay. Thank you very much, um, Ms. Harlos. Go right ahead.
Um, yes. Actually, um, I had put the statute in the OneNote. Um, what the Board of Directors did is violate their fiduciary duty. I think we all believe in consent, and I don't think silence is consent. Um, contrary to Mr. Hagopian, I don't think this is a case of bylaws. They had good bylaws. Their bylaws told them they couldn't do this. To say because they didn't have some kind of robust appeal procedure that they consented. If we applied that to other areas of life, I think we would find ourselves in quite the pickle, and I don't think we want to go there. They did have good bylaws on this. Their bylaws do not allow it. And in fact, by trying to shove through this amendment in July at an illegal convention, I think that's a tacit omission by the board that the prior bylaws didn't allow it. That's why they were amm- trying to a- amend the bylaws to, um, allow it. But as far as what members can do, because they are a nonprofit corporation, they have fiduciary duties to their members. You can't just wave that away by going, oh, too bad, so sad. You, you didn't anticipate evil actions, um, on, on bylaws. I mean, what if the board decided to get together? And, and I am being hyperbolic here, but sometimes you, you do something that's called a reduction ad absurdum to show. What if the board decided that, you know, they were, um, that every board meeting, you know, they were going to sacrifice a goat to Satan? Are we just going to say, well, you know, they should have anticipated that in their bylaws? No. Like, that's obviously not within the realm of what they're supposed to be doing. We should not, as libertarians, think that every single thing that is just immoral needs to be spread, spelled out in the rules. They did limit their board. Their board ignored it. Their board went rogue. You can't write enough bylaws to prevent that. You have to count on the limits that you put into your bylaws. But, um, so what members can do is to petition a court to, um, order the Board of Directors to be the fiduciaries they're supposed to be. And a court can order them to call a special convention for the members to vote on this. I don't think, no matter what we decide, it can wait till March. A lot can go on between, um, now and then, but that's what the members can do. Arguably, and this would have to be discussed in executive session, I'd have some questions of Oliver Hall. Arguably, perhaps the LNC can even do that, or be a party with members. I'm not certain of that. This isn't my, my area of law. But I did put the statute up there where New Mexico courts do have the jurisdiction when a Board of Directors is breaching their fiduciary duties.
Okay, um, on that note, I, I see Mr. Tanyevich has his hand up. We're going to hear from Mr. Tanyevich, and then I'd like to start having anybody who has legal questions raise their hand and ask them. Um, but-
I am going to move to executive session for legal questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, but let me, let, let's ask Mr. Tanyevich to, to speak.
Thanks. Mine is not a legal question, just more of a comment. I think that, uh, the pardon me, I'm having some kind of connection issue. Let me, let me pass for now. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, uh, Ms. Harlos, did you have a motion?
Mr. Elliott's screen lit up. I didn't know if he was trying to get in line.
Oh, no, I, my hand is not up.
Okay, uh, yes, Madam Chair, um, I, uh, would like to move into executive session to discuss legal ramifications of the resolution and to ask questions of our counsel.
Okay, so who's going to be included in that executive session?
Um, I would like to include just the LNC. Um, I don't think any parliamentary issue, and Oliver Hall, obviously. I don't think any parliamentary issues are going to be implicated where we would need to have Mr. Brown.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to move into executive session to discuss legal ramifications and ask questions of our counsel with just the LNC and, uh, Mr. Oliver Hall. to move into executive session to discuss legal ramifications and ask questions of our counsel with just the LNC and Mr. Oliver Hall. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any, um, discussion or objections? Once, going twice. Okay, last time. Okay, if there's no objection, then we are gonna go into executive session. Madam Secretary, at your convenience, if you could stop the live stream. I apologize, we're gonna have to remove everyone, but as soon as we rise, yes.
I think I can put us into a breakout room where, um, the members can, and the stream should be stopping, where the members can stay in the room, and that way they'll know when we come back.
So you just let me know when we're ready.
We are, we are ready, Madam Chair. We are back from executive session in the main room at 9:11.
Okay, great, so we're still in committee of the whole?
Yes.
So did someone have, um, any type of recommendation they wanted to make to the LNC?
Yes, um, Madam Chair, I moved that the Committee of the Whole recommend, um, to the LNC to take no action this evening, um, and to, to consider these issues further over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, it's been moved.
Ma- Madam Secretary, you probably should recommend that the Committee rise and report that.
That's what I said.
With no action.
Did you hear that?
I, I didn't, didn't hear you say rise and report.
Oh, well, I'm pulling, uh, yeah, that's what I said. Yeah, so that, yeah, that's, that's my motion to move that, that, that the, uh, Committee of the Whole, I move to rise and report to the LNC that recommendation that we take no action tonight and consider it further, that they consider it further over the next couple of weeks.
So it's been moved, it needs.
Second.
There we go, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, any discussion on that motion? Okay. When we're in Committee of the Whole, do we actually need to do a roll call vote?
No, cause these votes aren't recorded.
Got it, I didn't think so. Okay, um, there's no objections, going once, going twice, three times, okay, the motion passes.
Right, and you, you have, you are no longer in the commu- uh, Committee of the Whole.
There we go. Okay, so we're out of Committee of the Whole, and we're now into regular session of the LNC's electronic meeting. Any further motions to be made this evening?
Um, I, well.
Or announcements, or announcements at this point.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I didn't know if you wanted public comment, that's why I didn't.
Okay.
I'm waiting your direction.
So let's take a look at the participants. Do we have anybody who would like to make public comment? If so, I would like to see some hands raised. And no pressure, I just wanna make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. And you guys, actually, you probably had an hour to chat already, but, oh, nope, we got one, two. Gonna wait five more seconds. Okay, so let's do one-minute public comment at the end, if you don't mind. We did two minutes initially, um, Mr. Scotty Bowman, please go right up.
Yeah, I'm just very concerned about what's gonna happen with the ballot status for a presidential candidate if this moves forward. Because what I saw on the post by the Libertarian Party of New Mexico was that they said that they would no longer, um, you know, put the LNC's nominee, or at least not necessarily, put the LNC's nominee on the ballot if, um, as a non-affiliated group. So, um, if this continues, are we gonna get to a position where we need to, um, create a new, or we can't, but get members in New Mexico to start a, um, loyal Libertarian Party of New Mexico in order to have that ballot line?
That's a great question. Since we're doing public comment, I'm not gonna dig into Q and A here. But I will tell you that at our next meeting, we're gonna discuss some of that stuff. So I'll keep, I'll make sure that the whole membership is informed. Um, let's go to, next up, we have Dustin Nana.
Hey, uh, so, uh, we didn't get to talk about this. I saw on the one note, there was a policy manual revision for, um, how, how we process applications to, to become an affiliate. Um, and I just think regardless of the issues that's going on right now, I think that was a pretty good revision. And I actually talked to a couple of my chairs about that. And it seems to me that, um, maybe at some point, maybe we're not in a three-hour meeting doing other stuff, that we should take that up.
Should, that's well noted. Remember, we got a meeting coming up on September 11th. Okay, um, let's go to Jonathan Jacobs. You are recognized, but we do not hear you because you're muted.
Uh, I will yield my place in line to the other two members, if that's acceptable.
Uh, yes, that is, just to raise your hand again, so I don't forget you. Uh, Mr. George Phillies?
If you can hear me, I will repeat advice that I have given before. You are a political body. There are two sorts of issues. There are procedural issues and there are political issues. Uh, focusing entirely on procedural issues will not necessarily lead you to an outcome that is good for the Libertarian Party. And I would strongly urge you to consider this as a political issue instead. That's my advice.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Phillies. Let's go on to Mr. Askin.
I, yeah, hold on. Yeah, I just wanted to point out, uh, we just kinda noticed a really unique problem we're in and wanna highlight it. At LPN, at the LP here in New Mexico, it's kinda hard to get anybody recruited, cause we don't really know what to tell them. I have no idea, uh, who to tell, uh, which constitution to abide by. And I don't know if we should pay dues. And, uh, we're just caught in a really rough spot, and it's, uh, hurting, you know, trying to get new people in. That's all I wanna say. Thanks.
Thank you very much, John Askin. Okay, Jonathan Jacobs?
Okay, um, I just wanted to say, A, I know a lot of people in this room, and I enjoyed talking with them uh, while you were in regular session. And, uh, I will be curious to, as to how well the Committee of the Whole functioned. Uh, not what was discussed in the meeting, but at some point, I hope somebody will let me in on to see how well it worked.
Thank you very much. And let's go to Mr. Richard Brown.
And I share Mr. Jacobs' concern. I would like to know how well you folks think the Committee of the Whole worked while you were in it, in the executive session, without, you know, divulging anything. You should not, just curious as to how well it worked. But I mostly wanted to say that while you were in executive session, those of us who were in the main room discovered that rather than having to use chat, we could actually talk to each other. And I think I speak for quite a few of us that say we really truly enjoyed it. It helped, it helped to pass the time. It was very informative. We all learned a lot, and I think a lot of us got to know each other better. And so I just want to recommend for the future, when you have executive sessions, that you let the rest of the members who are in the main room chat, just, you know, talk among themselves. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Elliott?
Uh, as, as someone who's brand-new to politics and comes at this from a career in business, I would say, uh, to answer those two questions, uh, that, uh, the, the Board functioned quite well in our, I don't even know what it's called, uh, in the, uh, body that we were operating within, uh, when we were in executive session. And I'm very optimistic that this Board will have the opportunity to meet one of my goals, which is we provide very strong services to state affiliates, and they're happy to be members of the Libertarian Party. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. I believe there's one item left on the agenda. If we're not gonna do.
Move to adjourn.
There we go. Anybody, uh, it's been moved, it's been moved in yee-hawed, um, that we will adjourn. Any objections? Going once, going twice. Last chance, okay. We are adjourned at 11:19 PM Eastern Time. Thank you all so much for slugging it out. Remember that we are going to have our monthly online meeting on September 11th. What a day to have a meeting. And make sure to get any of your agenda items in by this Sunday. That is the last day. Um, if you have agenda items related to this particular evening, they still need to be in by Sunday. If you need to speak to your state chairs, if you need to talk to anybody, please do so. We will be sending out an informal poll to the members of the Libertarian Party of New Mexico on both sides to ask them their feelings about disaffiliation and just to sort of get a sense of where they're at and what they would like to see achieved. Obviously, within the framework of abiding by bylaws, not breaking laws, and so on and so forth. But that is something that's gonna go out. And although it's only gonna be the Libertarian Party members of New Mexico who are voting in that, we are gonna make that information available to the public. And I think that that's gonna make everything going forward when we're dealing with this. It's, I think, it's gonna make everybody a lot more comfortable. That's, that's the idea. So we're looking for the best possible outcome for every, every party involved. Um, but on that note, thank you all again. Have a great night, and we'll see you on the next meeting.
Good meeting, and even though I'm in Louisiana, welcome to Texas, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Yee-haw. And I'm sorry for the weird things with the breakout rooms. I think I figured out where, what was confusing me. It's not entirely intuitive, but I'm a, I'm gonna test it.
We'll put your removal on the next, uh, you know.
Oh, yeah, oh my god, don't remove me, bro. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna do some test, uh, runs with, with some things I think I figured out over the next week, so that it'll go more smoothly next.
You're gonna get Zoom certified, that's what's coming.
Oh, god.
Okay, okay, thank you guys. Have a good night.
Bye-bye.